Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Douglas Planning Board Meeting for April 10th, 2018. The meeting is being recorded and is available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the Douglas website. We'll come to order at 7:01. And we have a public hearing scheduled for 7 o'clock. We also have two A and Rs. So, we're ready to go, Wu.
I'll recuse myself.
Yep, let the record show that Tracy is recusing herself from the public hearing.
No, we rotated them.
Oh, is that what it is?
Rotation.
We should rotate them.
No.
Still in another meeting?
No. He's asking all meeting. All set though?
Yep.
Okay, just give your name so we get it on the record, please.
Right. Bill Pivey is representing Guaranteed Builders this evening. The last meeting requested a letter from the clutter Joyce G. U., which is submitted there now.
Okay.
And it says, also a letter that you can read off of engineering regarding the groundwater situations. All of the other responses. To their questions or comments from the last meeting. I think that they've all been addressed. And it's the kind of, and you can read them off if you'd like.
Is that the, yeah, what's, Ernie?
Yeah.
Just on this, part of those options.
Is that what that's for?
The waivers?
Yeah.
Yep. All right, let's. You asking for total three waivers? Is that correct, though?
Correct.
This has one, only one of the three?
No, they're all good. They're all bold.
Number one is not a waiver. It's just the letters.
Yeah. Supposed to be three of them, right?
Right, it's the next three. Well, please, the next two. Three observations. There's three of them. Do we, do you read the letter, the letters?
Yep.
I don't see.
Is it here?
Yes, it's in the packet.
Well, this letter from April 10th has the same mistakes on it that the previous one had, right? They got, two got, two finished grades that are below groundwater level. That was one of the things that was supposed to be addressed, right?
Right, the one that's below.
There's two below, well, there's one below and one exactly the same now, according to these numbers.
Sure that isn't the old one?
No, it says, it's dated today, and it has applicant response, I don't know.
Page one?
Number. Page seven.
Mike, Mike, it's two, so just to help the chair.
That's true.
There's, there's two, they packet like, and they say for comment two, comment three.
Yeah, one's April 6th, one's April 10th.
Right.
So we're talking about?
Correct.
Yeah, that's the one thing we have to discuss.
How do you have, how do you get a waiver from when you're underwater? It's the same point you brought up last week.
Which, is that what there's still planning to do, Bill?
It's not being asked in a waiver, though.
Yeah, the problem I have with this is that, a contractor gets this, he looks at the plan.
Right, he's not gonna look at the waivers.
Right. He goes by what the grades are at the plan, and he's gonna be excavating below 10 feet.
Below 10 feet. The letter from the engineer addresses that, I think.
Is it?
Putting the monitoring wells in. This is the same, though.
Oh, there's, yeah, there's another here.
Still going below the 10 feet. Yep. My feeling is you have to stay above the 10 feet, and then.
So it's 494, he's saying. Of the ground. Water's on.
If you don't hit water, can do an additional test pit and see if he can go over then, but not before then.
Yeah, but, so, he's superseding what the response is, right, for 514 and 507 to be 494. Is that what he's saying?
Where?
Please allow this letter to serve the test pits one and 1A. So if you look at applicant response on the, okay, the one that they highlighted, they shaded, so one and two, one and 1A, you're right, it's 514 and 507, meaning its water is either above or at, but then the letter comes in, and it suggests that, please allow this letter to serve as, can I speak? At the high groundwater level, as test pits one and 1A at the above reference site have been determined to be at the elevation of 494 or deeper. So, that chart is apparently incorrect, and this letter corrects that.
No, no, it isn't. So what's wrong, I mean, which is?
The chart is wrong, and the letter supposedly supersedes it.
Which is, in my opinion, is stupid.
Right, they need to change the chart.
You're an engineer, you get the stamp, so somebody's playing a game here.
I mean, is it, you never want to think it's just to meet the criteria, but, let's, I mean, he is an engineer, and he's putting his P. on the line.
Well, I think, I think what's, to Mike's point, what's a little confusing is, you've got, the test pits allowed right above this table here.
No, what it is is this. 507 groundwater is 514.
Yeah.
But he says at the time the test pits were being dug, 24 feet was as deep as could be excavated due to limitations from soil conditions.
There's no such thing as.
What's that mean, that it was wet or something?
No, it's a game on words.
Yes, it is.
It's a game on words, is all it is. I don't like it, the numbers ain't showing like what you wanted.
What?
So, for me right now, until it's really hammered out.
So there needs to be an across-the-bore consistency.
Yeah.
It needs to be.
Exactly, yeah. But we have to know they're not gonna go below the 10 feet.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, that letter doesn't really answer that.
Nope. It's a game on words.
I'm a little confused with the 514 groundwater at that height. Groundwater usually maintains.
Barely level through a little.
Unless it was a pocket.
A little pocket and a.
Why, why are we jumping? I mean, I know the town well's close there and stuff like that, I'm just surprised we'd step up 20 something feet to find more groundwater up there. I mean, we're talking about a 20-foot change from test pit one to test pit two where the groundwater is.
Yep.
Surprising.
At the time, the test pits were being dug, 24 feet was as deep as could be excavated due to limitations from soil conditions and equipment used to dig.
Gravel.
In other words, they were doing soil testing with the shovel when they should've used a backhoe, so they didn't want to bring in the correct equipment. Or you didn't bring in a big enough drill, you know, you brought in a drill to drill 10 feet when you should've brought in a drill, drilled 50 feet. So, in other words, they're just.
So, after the site is upgraded to elevation 506, monitoring wells will be installed to ensure.
Which is too late.
Yeah, how do you fix it if it's groundwater? You can't, yeah, I don't, I mean, we just want clarity.
But Bill, to the chair, Bill, what is, what is the groundwater through the whole site? Is it, the flush rates by, you know, if the flush rate's about five feet, it's not too bad, but this 514 is confusing.
Well, when we, when we dug it, we never found the groundwater. So why didn't you put a number up? The engineer?
So the engineer should've written that this chart was wrong. He should've said the chart was wrong, and it should've had a right chart.
Yeah, why didn't you guys correct this in April 10th, excuse me, April 6th? Well, part of it's dated April 10th, and part of it's dated April 6th. Isn't that interesting? I mean, I'm with you on this one, I don't like it.
We don't have the test plate, it's shown on the plan, according to this?
Oh, yeah, it's on there, but. Oh, yeah, they, they had one. The chart.
They have to be in concert, whatever.
We can get that corrected, huh?
Want to review the other ones?
Yeah.
Yep.
Let's go to the. I gotta know where the groundwater is, Bill.
So there's a letter, did you see?
Can't, can't.
This is a letter, sorry.
I want with.
No, this one. From the engineer.
Is that the letter yourself from me?
Yeah, this is yours. I probably have it there.
You got a new packet?
It's in the packet.
I have it, I have, I found it.
Uh-uh. Yeah, it's right behind that one.
All right.
Well, this is the Joyce G. U. on it.
All right.
Do you want to read this one? Joyce, the letter from Joyce?
We got the letter from Joyce, we got the.
Should we read it aloud?
You don't have to read them.
Oh, we don't have to?
No.
Okay. So we question one, and we got it.
So, yeah, I mean, I think, I think we just need a cable that shows, because he's, he's pointing to the 494. I mean, if 494 is roughly where the groundwater is, or, I mean.
Or he's saying.
I'm saying.
One saying it can't be found, and one saying it's there.
I know.
Yeah, he's determined to be at the elevation of 494.
Yeah. I know, we drilled a well over on the VFW field, and this is a lot of surface water, there's no, we couldn't hit groundwater for, to save our life, for that well that we drilled. So, but, I mean, they're real close to the water tower.
We have a leak.
All right, so we gotta, we gotta get that human address, that has to be.
Sure.
Do we want to look at the other waivers?
And labeled in on the plan, right?
Yep.
And get them on the plan.
It's gotta be on the plan.
All right. It'd be nice to get this table redone somehow, rather than just a one liner. This guy over here. All right.
All right, so. That'll have to be on the other.
Okay. 100 feet of wetland? Um, I think that this is wetland across the street. Or so.
Yeah, we have to determine if it's a sensitive area. There's a, right across the street, and the wells are in the back of it, town wells are in the back of it. It's up to us to.
The waivers are all here on the explanations, you know that.
Yeah. He's going down the punch list of.
There's only three.
Yeah.
So the one in department has no problem.
Yep.
With the waiver one, so pretty much we can scare that one.
You've been before conservation already, right? And you've got a, you've got a set of conditions.
Yep.
And they didn't make any type of distance in their area.
There's no problem with number two.
Okay, the board, we agree? Is this number two, we all call them the same thing, one and two? Excavation within 100 feet of wetland?
Is it a special permit?
Yeah.
If you grab it, it's right there on the back.
Not, you're not looking at this waiver.
That's the one that we signed, this is the real waivers. This is the one that, this is the one that we got signed.
This is, um, not.
Well, you have it there. Don't worry about that. That one there, there it is. Two up from the back is a waiver list.
So, one we're good, two.
Second waiver? Second, 6.1.6 number four.
Yep.
I mean, as long as conservation is okay with that.
Yeah, they're not building it.
Right.
I don't think that's a.
Right, that's, okay.
Hard feet away from it.
And then on the slope.
What did we do for the other?
Put up the, the walls.
501. What did we do for pine? That was on northeast, I think, is that the same?
Maintain the slope.
Maintain the slope?
He's still going, so, we're okay with the second waiver?
Yep.
Everybody's okay with the second waiver?
I guess so, if they had, had conservation.
All right, third waiver. 6.1.7 number two states no slope shall be steeper than 2:1, 4:1 if preferred for erosion control and shall be required in sensitive areas. For the area on the plan, that is 1.5.12. He's still going with the wall, right?
Yep.
Are you tearing that now, or is it, is it gonna be teared, is it?
Yeah. That was on the plan. Then the only other thing that I saw on the special permit, you go to, page 707?
Yeah.
Paragraph P. If you look at the date, it should be 4/11/19, not 4/11/18.
Yeah.
It's just a misprint.
Oh, yeah.
Because if you look at the top.
Yeah, well, it expired tomorrow.
The end date is 19. So that's a typo that would have to be as an amendment. So the only holdup we have is water table.
Yep.
That I see.
That and the bonding.
What are they asking, $14,000 per acre?
Yeah, but they're, are you gonna bond the whole site? Because you're at, you're.
It says per acre.
So you're not, you're not exempting, in the first, request you were exempting the areas that you would say were gonna be the. All right, so the whole site's gonna be bonded?
Yes.
All right, and the wall will be bonded?
Yep. You are okay with the number three waiver? Yep. Remember, should the wall, it's like here, to help the steps.
Bill, Bill, how big's the site, is it 1.5 acres?
I think it's, I think it's an acre and a half, an acre and four.
Okay, okay.
Not quite an acre and a half.
Yeah, so, I'll stop it, Joe.
And I think, the only thing Bill was concerned about was, I thought it was pressing on to do that wall.
It's gotta be, we got one that bonded.
Yeah, but it's gonna have to be all figured in.
And what was the other thing?
The wall.
Yeah.
Stuff.
Okay. The only other thing, too, that I picked up on is, the plan doesn't have, doesn't show a property line. Doesn't have a land survey, a stamp on it.
Oh, it's.
Do we have, do we have?
What's on the upper, upper top, is that, this the engineer's stamp?
That's the engineering, that's not, it, there's no.
It's not a land surveyor?
There's no boundary markers for the land, for a land survey. So, if you're going within, to within the scope of work on the next piece of property, you don't really know where that piece of property ends and where yours begins. There's a line, but it's not a stamped, it's, it's not a.
It's just a drawn line.
It's not a line, it's not a line from a stamped.
Okay.
Land surveyor.
Get that taken care of, too.
So that's, that's the only other thing I picked up on.
Yeah, especially considering you're doing the excavation.
Yep.
And then that, I mean, how do you set your slopes?
Any other, any other comments or questions on it? Nothing else?
That's it. Some minor changes.
Okay, so, we can vote to close the public hearing. With the conditions that the water table be made known, land survey be done to show where the boundary marks are.
Right.
Okay. And what was the other one? Did you have one more, Mike?
No, the other one's just a date amendment, which will be amended.
You have to date the amended, okay.
Yeah. I think, maybe we want to hold off on a vote until we know everything's all set.
Well, we can, we can, we can close the public hearing and make a decision tonight if you feel comfortable with that, but it'll be, we won't sign until we get the rest of the, or we can, we can continue.
I think I'd rather wait until we see what.
You want to continue?
Yeah.
Do you want to close the public hearing? And then wait on the other piece?
We shouldn't, if they're coming back with another document, we shouldn't close the public hearing, no. Correct?
If we're gonna get more info, new information, yeah.
Could be. I mean, you're looking at the information being put on it for the.
Yeah, and we have another, we have another meeting in two weeks. Will I shoot for that, Bill? Get the rest of that cleared up?
Yep.
And then we should be able to close the public hearing?
Those two items.
Yeah, waivers and stuff, obviously, you know, we're all set with.
Yep.
All that, the water table.
Water table, the land survey, and the bonding for the entire area, and a bonding for the wall. And it's $14,000.
Yeah.
You'll have to work out, I don't know what we would bond the wall at, but I'm sure between you and Bill, and your engineer and Bill, you should be able to come to a.
We'll do.
That sound good?
Yep.
All right, we'll do that, then.
Are we, two weeks, that's the 24th?
That's 24th is on next meeting, yep. You want to.
First thing.
I don't think there's anything listed.
Just for clarification, are we saying that this feedback from this engineer?
You want it, you want to be right on it?
Their ex-lets on the.
7 o'clock again.
We want to see a table that matches. An accurate table.
Okay, let's.
Before we do that, make sure there's nobody in the audience.
Yeah, is there anybody here, this is a public, this is a public hearing, anybody here that has any comments or questions as to this project? Hearing none?
My name is Andrew Gorban, I'm actually a resident of Oxford, so I need your permission to speak this evening.
Yep, you have it.
I was asked by Mr. Twospo to interpret some of the application material, and I have explained to him that some of his wetland concerns fall under the purview of conservation, but we did have just one Congress, one question about the application that was submitted to you in your rights number 19, where the applicant indicated on page three that there was gonna be nothing within 10 feet in hot water tip.
Yeah, that's what.
I'm just trying to understand whether the hearing is closed, if that can be waived or not.
We're not closing it, that's, that's why it's still an issue that we're having?
We don't, we don't.
On that water table?
What we asked the applicant to do is to come back and, and show us that they're gonna stay 10 feet above the water table.
Thank you.
They weren't asking for that, for it to be a waiver?
Yep.
They weren't asking the waiver at 10 foot threshold?
No, but we, but it's not, yeah, but it's, it's something we have to know. Okay, all right, anybody else have any questions or concerns? All right, so we'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for Guaranteed Builders and Developers, Inc., for application for a special permit, Earth Removal, 37 Glen Street.
Second. To.
To. April 24th at 7:00 PM.
Yep. Do you want to mention, can I mention the?
We're not closing it.
Conditions?
No.
Bill has something, how about 7:15?
Okay.
Okay?
7:15. Thank you. Thanks.
Very good.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Today, 24th?
Going to the 24th.
Two weeks, imagine that.
Yes.
So is your hat from the Caymans? With the Caymans?
We did. Yeah, two weeks.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Is it in butter?
The tissue.
Ready to use tissue?
Put back together so we can put the same pack.
Trying to know that wasn't in butter.
All right, next item on the addenda. 7 o'clock. A and R is Dallas Chase, Ball A Chase, Orange Street. Someone here to present that one?
Hi, Lance Anderson from Heritage Design Group. Can I let this on the table?
Sure.
Yep. You're good, you're good, you're good. 67 acre parcel with 968 total frontage. Cutting out from, that's the original house, 22 of Alice Chase. Any questions?
To the chair. Question, didn't we approve, was that across the street that we approved?
Yes.
Okay, because there's like, you got a couple of us going, wait a second, is this the second or the third one? So.
Nope, that, yeah, that was, that was across the street.
Across the street, okay.
Yeah. This is.
So where's lot, is this the creation of the new lot here?
This, this is the new lot, and it'll be remaining 19.
19 acres.
19 and 0.3 acres remaining, correct?
Is all over here?
The 19, yes.
Yep.
Is that the new one?
Yes, this is the new.
So we've got the town file number on there?
2018-08, down the bottom, yes.
You've got the remaining land, not a separate building lot?
Correct, not a separate building lot.
And then, what is the structure on the remaining land?
Yeah, house number 22.
That's Alice's old lot.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then the font? Changed the font?
Yes, yep. On the site distance, he had asked for the font to be changed.
Okay.
And over here.
Yep.
What, any further questions?
No. Make a motion to endorse the A and R plan for heirs of Alice Chase, to Ball Chase, Orange Street.
Both made by Tracy, seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Do you have a mile, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you can lay it out right here if you want. Sign that, we'll sign the other one.
You and I see each other on Orange Street.
Yes, we did, yeah, you were in the van. You asked me if I wanted to move, and I said, no, yeah. You done on there now?
How many we have to, how many we have to stamp of these?
The watch four. In the box. Our magic pen, G.
Yes, sir.
Link the bundle.
Here, we'll just pass it along.
Yep.
It'll go one way, though.
Look at that, they have in the stamp, and the four we can leave.
I think, I think, because we asked for it last time.
Isn't that nice, you have a case and up course.
You have to roll it out. You know, it's the Henry Ford line right here.
Stamping. And we have four other copies.
Yeah, right there, we're stamping.
Bless you.
Oh, you know what, I got yours.
That's right, this one's not fitting, so.
Yeah. I got a, I got a bigger stamper. Hey, hey, keep that out. Hey, hey, keep that out.
That's called a compensative.
Alright, cool. Those are ready for stamping? Lot four? Yep. And then I think just the Mike and I'm going to have to stamp it. Sign.
Oh, yep.
We're organized tonight. Where the paper copies?
Yeah.
Lot four?
Yeah.
I know, I know, I know.
What a third period.
They blew it.
The long account, big.
I know. The other guy's He like fell over.
He hurt himself twice. Everybody?
Sure.
That's, uh, seven overs, too?
Nope. You need ten, yeah.
I can probably notice what was Is Alice, is it horses over there?
Okay, thank you.
What's that one? And then they're in.
That was the sprint one that you showed us.
Oh, we don't need that one, too?
No, we only need four stamps.
Oh, okay.
More copies to stay.
Thank you, folks, thanks a lot.
Appreciate it.
Do you want to pivot one back?
Uh, sure. Thank you.
Yeah, have a good night.
You too, thanks a lot.
Next day in our garage. How do you say that?
Weagle? Weagle?
Weagle?
Weagle.
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 Weagle. Eight thirty-two Northwest Main Street.
Here's where Weagle was.
Hmm, same, same as Scotty?
Yeah.
Estima, just size copies if that'll be helpful.
Revised? After the, uh
After, yep.
Okay.
Number on it.
There you go. There.
This can help?
That's the town line. This is the one on the town line.
Just give you an idea for the record.
Good evening, my name is Byron Andrews, I'm with Andrews Survey and Engineering, and I'm in George Weagle tonight. You may recall, last year, I used stamping pen separating this lot here into a non-buildable parcel and the remaining, and a lot to be conveyed. Uh, Mr. Weagle, in retrospect, decided that he wanted to adjust the lot line to go a little further south. What it is, is he wants to keep ownership of the
Come up here with that.
Is he, is he the
Ownership of the
Of the, of the Brooks, so
Of the Brook?
Yeah, so the line was here, and we're just pushing it about twenty-five feet further.
That explains, alright, so you moved the line?
Yeah.
Now, he, he's, he's got the, what is it, the Hill, Hilltop Farm or whatever it is? You run that?
It's the one before. Brett has it across the line, on the lot.
It's the next one up. The next one up? It's the next one up.
So
So this guy's with the
He is the butt, is he the butt piece or the below piece?
These three pieces here.
Yeah.
So this one is going to remain a non-buildable parcel and
You're going to combine it together with this?
Yeah.
I know what you mean. That's, I saw a flight today on the way home.
Boyd, any questions?
No.
Tracy?
Did you put the number? Oh, yeah, there it is. So I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R plan for George Weagle, one twenty-eight Douglasford, South.
I'll second that.
Eight thirty-two Northwest Main.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Alright, opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Even down that depth?
Yep.
The White House will be here?
Yeah.
Just before
I have like six copies I need.
All we need is four. Yeah. We'll sign the mile line.
Alright, I'm probably missing because he's tucked back a little bit more than
Um, not really, but it's at the line. Yeah, because that's still, means to say, I think the Cooper Mill, when they made the bounds and all that, was right there.
Oh, was it?
Crossed, on that Brook.
Oh, that's interesting.
That's what I was told. Yes, I mean, uh Evan said that, that where they used to do it all was, that Brook is what fed the mill.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's what John always calls it, Cooper Mill. Everybody, it's from here, called Northwest.
It was never called Northwest Main Street.
That's interesting, I like that, that kind of old history. I live on Mill Street, because it was a grist mill at the end of my street.
Yep.
Oh, is it, oh, yeah.
This lot straddles the, uh
He's gonna, he's gonna get get, uh, two tax bills.
See what I mean? It's right over the line.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, it's maxed us to the Brook. It's a nice little area.
Because that's, that runs all the time.
Oh, yeah.
All the cars.
It gets real low, so
You gotta stamp all those other ones, too.
Yeah.
Look at this girl, signing it sideways.
First, let's stamp them. Be firing.
Perfectly clear, Mike.
Fold it so that front part's out like you just did, that was
Okay, on the other ones?
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah.
Do we have them?
No.
Bill wanted to move the signature block down to like the right-hand corners.
Yep.
When they're folded, it shouldn't
They're coming.
It'd be good, that's what we want to do, is a standard.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can fold them if you want.
No, I was just gonna throw them on the table, step.
Oh, yeah, go for it.
And I do it right here.
I think that's five.
Well, because it's easier when we have them.
Yes, everybody?
Five, six, seven.
Jerry, Marion.
Yes, thank you. Oh, is that over there? Alright, how many copies did you give us?
Uh, six.
We only do four. Just do four.
Yes, we have that all staffed across to get in there. Right, yeah. All it's all, lot?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
On the lot?
Yeah.
On the car path, that's what I was seeing of them.
Yeah, yeah, we've put some stakes in there.
All the stakes are in there.
And he's a retired engineer, so I think he's it's become his hobby, too.
It's a toufa.
Huh? He's a retired engineer, so it's become his
I always have to go to my work. Then I go to the trainer, then I come here to a meeting, and I usually go half the length to go out, every single night. More of meetings, I think.
What did, uh, did you wait, no, what did Alice do there? Alice Chase.
But did she what?
Did she have horses or something?
What did Tom do, get in the car?
Uh, I don't know.
She's out on the boondocks, by itself.
It's out on the boondocks.
It's faster, more efficient.
Do you know where it is?
It's on my head.
Well, yeah.
Wait, who's that?
Well, you go down, uh
Huh?
Ninety-eight, ninety-eight, is it? Okay, way down there. You take a left on, uh
Oh, they're calling you for stamping.
You take a left on
Pine, on Pine, you go down
Yeah, yeah, go down Pine Street? And keep going? I think it's like two miles down, there's like a road to the right, and that's it. And then you follow that road. That road actually comes out
So now we're done.
Where's that road come out, Rhode Island, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're up, buddy.
Yep.
What do we have next?
Talking about orange.
Yeah.
The orange.
Yeah, goes through, um
Fairy, after fairy?
See, it's always just called orange, and we don't have no green street, we don't have a, you know, red street, we've got an orange street.
No apple street.
No apple.
Alright, well, next, we'll go to discussion, and we're gonna take number two.
Number two?
Road layout and acceptance recommendation, Stonewall Court, that's the first one. So what they're asking us to do is that we recommend that the selectmen accept the layout, Stonewall Court, and accept it as a town road.
So moved.
What say Bill?
Bill checked these out? All these streets, okay.
Yep.
Alright.
So moved.
Alright, so everybody's, go with that, right? Motion been made by Mike Z, seconded by Tracy?
Oh.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Alright, the next one is Dalling Way and Brandywine Circle.
One by one?
No, we can do these two together because they're both in the same subdivision.
Yeah.
I thought Brandywine was, uh
What's that?
Looks like this, right off a pond. That was one approved.
Fine, okay.
What we're doing, we're going to recommend to the selectmen that they accept the layout. What's going to happen at town meeting is that it will probably not be accepted.
No.
Is a discrepancy with an easement on one of the property owner's boundaries of property. Um, in their deed, it was, on the plan, it's, there's a, even granted the drainage on that property. In the owner's deed, the easement was not put in the deeds. So the town, the town will probably have the deed redone with the easement in there, and then they'll, and then they'll accept it after that, but
So we should pass it.
But this, for the purpose of tonight's meeting and for the town meeting, we're going to vote to
Put it in.
No, I mean, just
Recommend acceptance of it. If the deed doesn't get straightened out by the time of town meeting, then we won't accept.
I see what you're saying.
It won't be recommended.
Subject to.
Subject to, yes.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Tracy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. And one more thing, Tracy, before you leave. This is the bond charity for our debt project that we had discussed, and we needed the paperwork. Alright.
Revised, yeah.
Yep, so vote and sign this pending town council authorization of release. That's what we're asking, we're being asked to vote on.
For?
For the release of the money.
Of?
You want the amount?
Or the name, or the address?
It's for, it's for, uh Ron Ardet, for the Douglas whatever.
Hill?
Not Downs, is it?
Down Road? Pond?
No, up, up, off of Sault Street.
Off of Sault Street?
On the left, yeah.
Yeah. Is that Downs Road? Yeah, that's the Downs Road project.
Downs Road.
Yeah, that's the Downs Road project, it's released of
That's off of Southeast Main.
Right, correct. It says, I Ronald V. Ardet hereby agree to indemnify and hold nonless the town of Douglas against any and all monetary or other damages associated with the release to me as a sole beneficiary of our debt builders, Inc. A Massachusetts business corporation involuntarily dissolved on May 3rd, two thousand and seven. Remaining bond funds in two accounts, Spring Meadow Estates, the amount of nine hundred and sixteen dollars and six cents. And phase two of Shady Knoll, thirteen thousand, six hundred and ninety.
Pending town council's approval?
Yeah.
Of the release?
Yep, town council authorization of the release.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, vote to release the funds for Shady Knoll and the Spring Meadow, to our debt builders, punting the authorization of the release.
Second.
Money.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion?
This is the first, have you discussed this before?
Yeah, this is the one we were, yeah. It's one we've been working on for a couple of meetings now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
We need to sign that, right? I think that one we have to sign.
Yep.
Cool.
Tracy's, the next thing, you can be on her way.
Thank you.
Is it Addle?
Yes.
Yep, it's Addle.
Well, I figured three things at seven o'clock, it should have been on here. Seven thirty.
Hey, we're still, we're still, hey, we're still on
Patty Cathy.
What, what time did we say? No, we said, we said seven fifty-seven, seven fifty-seven is what we said.
I've been here.
We got twelve minutes.
You know that.
We got twelve minutes to finish it off.
Oh, I'm sure you guys
Don't slow us down.
Be all, here all night.
No, we don't have a after more, you know, after meeting plans. Cool.
Okay?
You want on me?
Yeah.
Okay, boys.
You want, you want just
We're going on.
Have a wonderful night.
You too.
We gotta run an marathon one day, shouldn't we?
No, I'm going to be in California.
How are you?
Yeah.
Good for you. For how long?
Five days.
Mr. Tebow? We're both.
Oh, yeah.
City area. With baby.
Enjoy.
Thank you.